Okay.
Are you by it? I'm by.
I'm there.
Um. We're in the AM. Are you at the end of that? Just put me on speaker.
I am.
AM, are you here? You hear me? Do you hear?
Can you see Sam?
I don't yet. Eight seven thirty bucks.
Can you check the speaker for us?
Okay. So. Change it from your own to watch tech.
Test, test. Are we able to hear?
I'm paying attention. No sound. Um, I, I am unmuted and I'm talking. Michael, if you're speaking, I couldn't hear you.
AM, are you able to hear? I have a thumbs up from AM.
Yeah, you just came through.
And we hear you. Excellent. Okay, good. We have somebody else coming in. All right. And we have three trustees and need one more. And. Thanks, Tim.
Good morning, everyone.
What?
I said, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. It's John, John Johnson. Oh. Oh, okay. We will be muting until the meeting starts. Uh, thank you. Test, test. Are we able to hear? Hey Judith, welcome. Can you hear me? Okay, now that's working beautiful. Thank you very much. All right. Good morning, everybody. Uh, welcome to the October meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. It's great to see everybody. Um, why don't we go around and do some introductions? We can start here in the room. I'm Michael Dunn. I'm the president.
That's a set lack treasure.
John Walters, board member.
Uh, and let's see, we got Sharon and Judith. Can you all please introduce yourselves?
Sharon Fitzsimmons, board member.
Oh, we lost Judith. Okay. Okay, hopefully Judith will join us. We do have a quorum. Um, so we can proceed. The first item is the approval of the September twenty twenty-three minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the September minutes as presented.
Thank you, John. Can I get a second?
I can.
Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the September minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion is approved. Hey Judith, welcome. Can you hear me? Hi Judith, welcome. Can you hear me? Oh, you're on mute. We still can't hear you, Judith. Hmm. Okay, we still cannot hear Judith and she is not muted. Any thoughts? That's a good question. Hey Sharon, could I ask you to speak just so we can see if we can hear you?
Sure. Can you sound check?
Sharon's coming in loud and clear. Judith, can you chat? Okay. Um, let's proceed. Judith, if you can use elaborate hand gestures to communicate with us, we will make it work. Thank you for bearing with us, everybody. The technology is a pain despite the valiant efforts of our library team here. Thank you all so much for setting all this up. Um, moving on, item number three, let's move to the approval of the monthly expense ledger. Uh, can we get an entertain a motion to approve this monthly expense ledger?
A question on, um, if I'm at page two of six. About the third one down, is that twelve hundred and seven dollars? Is that a monthly fee for the trash and like some dark?
That's the Waste Management in Maryland's.
Yes, it's a monthly fee.
Any other questions about the EALs?
On page five. There's one that says de sector access points. What is that?
Those are our IT Wi-Fi access points.
Okay.
And de sector is our, uh. Contractor with that.
All right, not hearing any more questions. We can entertain a motion to approve the EALs. Does anybody wish to? So move.
I'll move to approve the EALs.
Beckett?
Thank you, Tressa. Thank you, Sharon, for seconding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. And. We wait all quarter for this. Time for the treasurer's report. Over to you, Tressa.
Nothing exciting, sorry. Uh. You all have the report in front of you. Basically, we have, um. Based on market fluctuations, um, the account value has decreased. And from this quarter, um. We wrote one check for the library intern, uh, which also added to a decrease in total value. Um. Leaving the total value for the Vanguard Original at sixty-one thousand nine oh five forty-seven. And the account value, the end of September for the Rudolph at thirteen thousand four eleven seventy. Um, I also added the Schwab account, your beginning value and the current value. So that did increase. By about fifty thousand dollars. Um. Anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So, any questions or comments from folks? Okay. Uh, we don't need to approve this, do we? Yes, okay, great. Uh, moving on with the Smurla report, John is not here today. Judith, I know you have stepped in. Thank you so much. It might be near impossible for Judith to communicate a Smurla report to us, given the technological issues. So I think we can move on from here unless other folks have any Smurla updates to share. Okay. So we can move forward. Thank you. So with that, let me turn it over to Michael for some celebrations and we'll keep moving forward.
Well, actually, I thought what we will do first is hear from our auditors, S and B Company. Um, we did this week, uh, receive the audit and we've shared it with you. So they're going to report out on their process for that. And it's in your packet if you, um, if you didn't come back and get it yesterday because we've only just got it. Um, I think you were.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what? No, I've got mine.
All right. Is that my cue to start?
That, that, that will be your cue to start. Yes, please.
Okay. Oh, great. I was gonna share my screen, but it looks like, um, you guys already have it up. Well, good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Chris Lehman with SBN Company. As well, I have, uh, Renata Reese. That's with me as well. Uh, we'll kind of walk through this presentation at. At a high level, if you have any questions, just feel free to, uh, interrupt. Can, can everyone hear me? Okay? Okay, good.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, if I'll just, if you could go to slide three, that includes the executive summary. So the services we were engaged to perform was the, uh, annual financial statement audit for the June thirty. Twenty twenty-three financial statements for the library. In addition, we do assist with drafting the financial statements. That's what's termed a non attest service, but it is a service we can provide. Under, uh, the accounting or auditing standards that we have to follow. It does not impair our independence by. Preparing the financial statements. We just have to make sure all information. Comes from management. We don't keep any source records or house any. Uh, of the library's financial information. We are planning to issue a, a clean opinion on the financial statements. That says that the financial statements are reasonably free of material misstatement. We did not discover any instances of fraud in our audit. A financial statement audit is not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism. About fraud and that it could be perpetrated by anyone at any time. Um, I'm gonna have, uh, Renato walk through some of the internal control processes, uh, that we rely on, but we had no material weaknesses in those processes that we've identified. And then lastly, we've received the full cooperation of management. Any questions that we had, we got timely. Uh, responses on that. Any, any records that we requested backup for, we got. Adequate backup for those items. If, if, for example, if there were unsupported transactions, uh, especially from a dispersment perspective. We'd be required to bring that to the board's attention, but there were no. There were no unsupported transactions that we identified through our audit process. If you go to the next slide. This is just a picture of our, really a risk-based audit approach and we spent a lot of time in the planning phase as well as. Understanding the design and the operation of the internal controls. When you think about the volume of revenue transactions, the payroll and. Just general dispersments to vendors, there are significant volume of transactions there. Where we understand the process, that management and that the organization goes through to process those transactions and then do certain testing. To ensure that those processes are, are functioning properly and those accounts hit the financial statements. Uh, properly. Next slide. So from a, from a risk area, kind of looking at the balance sheet and the financial statements of the organization and. Just the nature of the accounts, the looking at cash and investment reconciliations, given the large. Balances that you have. Of, you know, not only cash within the general fund and the, in the grants fund, but even with the fiduciary fund. And the investments that are saved in the OPEB trust. Looking at that, looking at, for, looking at fixed asset accounting from. Uh, book capitalization to also just. Uh, other fixed assets, uh, that are capitalized through the year, looking at how depreciation is calculated. Doing certain tests for completeness of liabilities, especially looking at a balance sheet with a cutoff period. And looking at activity that happens subsequent to year end to look for potentially missing liabilities or unrecorded liabilities. Then also looking at revenue recognition within the revenue lines within the financial statements. And also because with OPEB, there's a lot of actuarial assumptions that. Impact the, uh, recordation and the. Numbers that are put on the financial statements for OPEB. We do place, uh, reliance on those actuary. Assumptions and calculations, but we are required to also review the calculations performed by the actuary. Uh, you know, for reasonableness and, and making sure assumptions are reasonable. Any, any, anything so far? I know I'm going a little fast, but otherwise I'll have Renata pick it up, uh, on the next slide.
I, I see there are a couple of comments in the chat on Zoom. Is there anything in there that we need to address right now?
Oh, um.
Those are from Judith, um, and it was just saying that she's not quite, um, voted into Smurla yet. So it's before.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying, Judith.
Okay, uh, next slide and then Renata, do you want to? Take this slide?
Yep. Hi everyone, I'm, I'm Renata. Um, so. Can we get, can? Okay, so, um, so this are, this is the assessment of control environment. So we use the COSO framework. With its five interrelated components, uh, that you see here on the slide. So when we're assessing the control environment for the library. Uh, and mainly assessing the effectiveness of the control systems, we looked at, um, the control environment. Uh, risk assessment, controls activities. So really the design and operating effectiveness of the activities. Uh, information, communication and also monitoring activities. And as you can see, uh, at the bottom of the slide here, uh, when we assess the control environment, we've determined that the five areas are. Uh, designed and operated effectively.
Can I ask you a question about that? Yes. With the determination of effective at the bottom of this table, what are the other possible responses in that range? Is it effective to ineffective or very effective or?
It, no, that's a great question. It's typically. It's really either or. So it's either not effective. Well, I guess it could be three. It could be. Not effective areas for improvement or effective. So if. We don't really go much of a broader spectrum than that. We don't get too creative with the, with the words of it. Um, but, but effective. Means it's operating as, you know, designed or it would be not effective if there was an area that was not present or functioning.
Okay, so effective is the goal on all of these things.
Yeah, effect, it doesn't really get better than that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I just, if there's, if there's some kind of secret awesome level that we want to strive to.
There's nothing to read behind, uh.
Okay, thank you.
The terminology, but I, that. I appreciate the question. That's a, that's a common question we get when we get to this slide. The next slide?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't want to steal your thunder, but I thought you were ready for the next slide.
I am. Thank you, Chris. Um, so. Going into more detail of the processes that we looked at, uh, so on the treasury, we'll be looking, we looked at, uh, cash reconciliation, bank reconciliations, um, investments as well. On the, we also looked at estimates, um, financial reporting, uh, revenue recognition and all those four processes we've determined that they are. Uh, designed and operating effectively. And then on the next slide, please. So this slide, uh, we also looked at expenditures, so purchasing accounts payable, cash disbursement. So this slide, we also looked at expenditures, so purchasing accounts payable, cash disbursement, payroll, and then also the fixed assets and those three key processes are also effective. And with that, I'll turn back to, to Chris on the next slide.
Yep. So if you go to the next page, we've included just a summary of the balance sheet over the past two fiscal years. And when we get to the next page, I'll also highlight the revenues and expenses, but starting here, and just keep in mind, this is what's termed entity-wide. This is the entity-wide financial data, which includes the general fund plus the grant fund, plus long-term assets and liabilities. Those long-term assets are your capital assets and the long-term liabilities, predominantly the OPEB liability, as well as some compensated absences, which those items do not meet recognition for general fund assets and liabilities. So just keep in mind, this is kind of the picture all, all in of the organization. So for twenty twenty-three, you'll see that total assets and deferred outflows, you know, fairly stable year over year, a little bit up at just, just under three and a half million dollars of total assets and deferred outflows. The majority of your current other assets, that's predominantly cash and investments within the general fund and the grants fund. Keep in mind on your entity-wide financial statements, the, the the OPEB asset itself is not recognized since that's fiduciary in nature. But the accounting related to the net OPEB liability is on the financial statements that net OPEB liability is included within the other liability co, uh, component, that's one point nine million dollars. Roughly about one point seven million dol, one point seven million dollars of that other liability represents the net OPEB liability that's calculated by the actuary. Then because of certain changes within that liability over time, there's certain items that get deferred, either as a deferred outflow or a deferred inflow, and that's why you see two line items related to deferred outflows for both OPEB and pension, I'm sorry, for both OPEB from a deferred outflow perspective and a deferred inflow perspective. Those are getting amortized through OPEB expense into future periods. From a net position perspective, the total net position has improved. That was a six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar negative net position in twenty twenty-two. That's improved to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, still a deficit of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand at the end of twenty twenty-three. You'll see, you know, large negative unrestricted net position, that's fairly common within a lot of governmental organizations, especially as they have unfunded OPEB liabilities, or even pension liabilities, which in this case, there's no net pension liability here for the library. But with the OPEB standards that were implemented a few years ago, that's, that's really taken a taken a hit on what the entity-wide net position calculation, calculation can be. Before we go to the statement of revenues and expenses, any, anything I could answer elaborate on the balance sheet?
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
In that top paragraph of the three, I want to be sure that I'm understanding what I'm seeing. Fourth line down, deferred outflows for OPEB. And I'm, I'm getting lost in the pluses and the minuses.
Okay, so. Yeah, so the, a deferred outflow, of course, GAZ, you know, you guys follow GAZV, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and of course, they make nothing easy. But theoretically, a deferred outflow is a debit, so it's, it's another term for an asset. Although technically it doesn't qualify as an asset. So think of a deferred outflow as an asset. Think of the deferred inflow as a liability. So really, if you look at your net OPEB liability all in, it's a function of the one point two million dollar asset, the one point seven million dollar amount that's sitting in other liability. And it's also a component of the deferred inflow of one point five million, which for lack of a better term, is also a liability. And the reason for that is because every year the actuaries doing calculations that are going to impact that liability. So for example, the, if there's a change in assumption, which a common change in assumption is every year the actuary is going to calculate a discount rate based on the, the value of funding that's in the plan and just kind of projection of earnings against benefits that are going to be paid. There's a blended calculation they do every year. So the, the discount rate tends to change every year based on those calculations. And if there's a gain or a loss within the OPEB liability for that, you, you can't recognize that gain or loss all in one year. That would cause just really some crazy fluct, you know, the accounting term, crazy fluctuations in one year or the next. So the theory that GAZV has come up with is items that would come through OPEB expense get amortized for a, for a smoothing purpose. So these deferred outflows and inflows are basically past previous years' changes in the liabilities that are amortized and smoothed over typically about a five to seven-year period for every year's worth of layer that comes on. So if I rambled too much, let me know, but I can try to clarify anything that I just said as well.
Let me, let me try and rephrase it. Maybe we can get a simpler answer. Do these figures on this page reflect the fact that over a multitude of years we have been underfunding the OPEB account actuarially?
Yes.
And which line is that?
That's in other liabilities of the one point nine and one point seven of that, one point seven million of that represents the cum, really the cumulative underfunding of the OPEB of the OPEB liability.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, any more comments or questions before we get to the statement of activities?
Anything in the chat we need to address?
Oh, let me take a look. I don't think so. Now again, this slide here is a entity-wide picture, so it does roll in general fund activity, but because it's also factoring in depreciation and some other items for OPEB expense, again, this is an entity-wide picture, so it'll be a little bit different than if you were just looking at your general fund. But all, all in, the revenues were up slightly year over year from just about six point four million in twenty twenty-two to nearly six and a half million in twenty twenty-three. And you'll see most revenue streams, you know, fair, fairly stable. Grant revenue is the one that kind of ebbs and flows depending on the grants that are that are received year in and year out, but you'll see grant revenues taking a little bit of a hit from last year to this year. Then from a total expense perspective, expenses are up slightly from just, just under six point one million in twenty twenty-two to just barely over six point one million in twenty twenty-three. So from an entity-wide perspective, that's a positive change in the net position of the organization of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, which is fairly close to what it was last year at, at three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Are all grant revenues government funds? I'm not sure if they.
No, no, not all grant revenues are government funds necessarily. We get grants from some local agencies as well. For example, the Arts Council, that's not going to be government funds, but the largest majority of them do come from the state as LSTA grants. That's money that's funneled from the federal government down to the state and then distributed at the state level. And the primary reason for the large drop this year is that the previous year we had funding for the mobile library, which was an extra-large sort of pass down with ARPA funds. And then this year, of course, we, we did not have that.
Any other comments or questions there? And then just for compare, I know I didn't put the number on the page here, but from a general fund perspective, there is an increase in the general fund's fund balance of eighty-five thousand dollars for the year. So the general fund did have a positive of, of value there. Of course, there's reconciling items that'll get from the general fund change to the entity-wide change of three hundred and forty-eight thousand. But just to give you that perspective as well, the general fund was, was positive for the year as well.
So I see that the donated facilities on the top, the income is washed out by the rent that we pay in the same amount for those facilities.
We never see that money. It's funny money. Ostensibly, we pay a dollar rent, but that's just how the county, how the county says, all right, well, this is what the value we think of your rent is, and we're not going to charge you for it.
Well, that's fine, but why doesn't it show up that way on this report? If they're donated facilities, that ought to be zero and rent should be one.
Well, I don't know that, that we've bothered to do anything with that.
No, maybe I should be asking it of our auditors.
Well, they do zero out, but you get county appropriations for rent is is up at the top, and then the rent expense is the same number. So they zero out. Well, we don't.
No, we don't.
It's considered a, it's considered an in-kind service. And in-kind services require recognition through a, a revenue and an offsetting expense. So that way a user of the statements knows the value of something that the organization is getting for free. That's not uncommon in other libraries.
That's an understandable answer.
So, so the county never gives us the money and we never pay it.
All right, that's an understandable answer. Can you jump down to please, other expenses? And give us a little more granularity on nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars?
I think the details are in the audit itself. He's just doing the overview.
Okay, all right. So we'll expect to see that later. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions there?
Nope.
Okay, if you go to the next slide, the next slide. And I'm not going to read through each one of these items, but the, a lot of these we touched at the beginning, you know, if we had problems getting through the audit, if we had disagreements with management, or like I said, you know, we had no fraud concerns, we had no unsupported transactions, we had no items that we would consider material weaknesses. This is the area where we would also recognize those items. So there's really nothing, really nothing negative from an audit perspective that I would need to bring, you know, to your attention through the process, you know, aside from just reviewing, you know, eventual approval of the draft here, we do have management sign a management representation letter upon completion of the audit that takes responsibility, they take responsibility for for the financial statements and all the information that was given. That's really the last, the last step or steps, I should say, for, for finalization. We do have our, Renata and my contact information in here as well. If there's, you know, questions outside of audit season that either management has or the board has, you know, we make ourselves available for those items. So that's all I had from a presentation perspective. I can again, open it back up if there's comments or questions on anything that, that we had presented.
Just to make sure the board understands, we do have the audit next, so we will go, we can go through the details of the audit. This is just SBN Company's presentation on their work.
I, I do have one question for you, and on the audit itself on page is forty and forty-one and four and five. I'm sorry, three and four, only, only four. There's blanks for the dates when you present this that are in yellow, highlight. What date do we wish to put there? Is that something that you will do when we tell you the audit's been approved?
Yeah, so once the audit's been approved, that'll determine the date of our opinions. So that really, it's just a function of when we're ready to issue, that becomes the date of the opinion.
All right. And on page twenty-six, there's a number that's highlighted in yellow. We've reviewed that number and it is correct. So that, that can be, that, that can be un, unhighlighted, as it were. Thank you.
So ultimately, I think today we can consider whether to approve this audit. We may want to do that following this conversation, but any other questions or comments for our guests?
Michael, you had indicated in an email that we have this, that you and Belinda had gone over it, and there were a couple of things that you had found as problems.
Uh, no, they were just questions we had, and those have been resolved. Belinda has been working with S and B. So we, we think that this is final as far as all our numbers compared to what the, the accountant said.
Were any of those questions, did any of those questions result in a change to the narrative?
No.
I think Judith has a comment. If please, Belinda?
Commissioner, page twenty-two, commissioners do not approve the library budget.
I think, I think Judith is looking at number two, section B. On page twenty-two, which reads, prior to July one, the budget is approved by the Board of Trustees and the County Commissioners.
Actually, they do look at our budget and they approve their number, but we give them the whole thing. So they are aware and they have it in the county budget as to what the total is.
But that's not the same as approving our budget.
Well, they, they approve the amount that they give, and I wouldn't say that that statement's entirely inaccurate. They over, you know, they have oversight in some ways of certainly the county budget, and they give us approval of their amount. So I don't think that this is misleading.
Well, I view it as they're really, they're looking at what we want to spend the money on and what our total is, more or less. And they say, fine, we'll give you that. And it's assumed by them that we're then going to plug their money into the lines that we presented. And I don't think that's the same as approving our budget, because they don't niggled with us on individual line items, do they?
No. But we do have to report our total budget to them. So, and they do include it in their budget book. So I don't know if you'd say that's approving it so much as we do have to give them all the numbers in, for the whole total. It's not just their portion when we give them the numbers.
I, I think, knowing that this document is not binding on us as a board, it does not dictate what we do. But perhaps we could revise it to say, prior to July one, the budget is approved by the Board of Trustees and reported to the County Commissioners, if we add the words reported to.
I would, if that's a motion, I would second that.
Uh, Judith, Judith has a comment. She said, they make an allocation, but they knew not, do not approve our line item budget. Mike Hewitt stated that the budget was up to the trustees.
Yeah, thank you, Judith. That is true.
Yeah, be fine with making that edit or just removing reference to the commissioners. Either way is fine.
No, please, please do keep reported to. That is, that is accurate.
So let, let me make a motion that we, what? Okay, well, let me articulate it and then. So let me, let me ask to entertain a motion to approve this audit with the amendment that on page twenty-two, number two, section B, we add the words reported to before the County Commissioners. So the sentence reads, prior to July one, the budget is approved by the Board of Trustees and reported to the County Commissioners.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, John.
I will second.
Thank you, Sharon. Could we, could we stop sharing the screen so we can see the faces of our beloved fellow trustees and guests? Hey, all right. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstained? All right, the motion carries. Uh, Chris? Uh, Chris, Renata, thank you both so much for being here and thank you for speaking in very clear language. It was really helpful hearing from you.
Oh, guys, may I ask you to consider something?
Sure.
This is in the um overview on page six. Not all the readers of this document have young eyes. And so dark blue with black type poses somewhat of uphill climb. Can you reconsider it going forward? The contract issues there.
What document are you looking at?
On the slideshow.
Oh, on the overview. Okay, thank you. Your slide presentation.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, guys. Bye.
Bye-bye.
And at this point, do you wish to continue looking at the audit? Um, or do you wish to put it in its place in the agenda?
How do you mean? We've already approved it.
Uh, you have not approved the audit as a document, have you?
It's correct.
You you approved, you approved a change in rooting in it, but the whole document itself, I don't think we.
Okay, I thought I said to move to accept the audit with the amendment
Ah.
of the language.
Well, in that case, I um, I'm good. My mistake, I'm sorry.
Do you want to carry on?
Um, sure, let's just go right on ahead. Um, thank you for that because it is due to the state by November first, and this will be the first year we've actually been able to do that. And uh, so I really appreciate it. Um, I have just a couple of quick uh comments about it, if you will. Um. Uh, first of all, to second, what we just heard. This is a total picture, so it includes time off not yet spent. It includes the OPEB and the OPEB liability, your board accounts are in there. Um, FOL and donation funds are in there, so it really is um not exactly our operating budget, which we have a lot of control over. It includes money that the state gives for retirement um to the funds. So it's it's a, it's a total picture. I'm very pleased that yet again, there has been no concerns about how we do the financing and I wish to thank Belinda for all her work um doing that. I will say that the positive change in fund balance of sixty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars is offset by the fact that eight thousand one hundred ninety-two are restricted. That we do get FOL funds very late and don't have a chance to spend them down. So next year, we're going to change that and ask the FOL, um, assuming that they're able to uh get their book sale together again um to give us money in July instead. Um, and then we'll work to spend that money down.
Can I also state that this audit also includes the board's Vanguard and uh OPEB accounts?
Yeah, I said that it did have the board accounts in there, so.
Michael, speaking of the friends, uh, the last time we heard some numbers, I think they were gross. The their expenses hadn't uh been taken care of yet. What what did the book sale net, you know?
Are you asking how much money is on hand from the friends right now?
No, I'm asking how much their book sale netted.
Oh, um, I would have to go back and look at their budget figures to give you an accurate number, but they gave us sixty thousand this past um May.
Off of the book sale.
Yes.
Had to be net.
Yeah, yeah, that that was um, no, they they have, uh, it wasn't the book sale itself. They have year-round sales online and they had a December sale as well. So it wasn't just that book sale. I believe however they made right about that amount for the book sale and I can get you that number.
All right, thank you.
Let me note too, before we move on from the audit, that this is a really helpful tool for us as we look at our challenges with OPEB and other issues we face and other good things. And as Michael said, let me just reiterate, kudos to you, Belinda. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, everybody, for running such a tight, clean, ethical, detail-oriented, thoughtful ship. You all are doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Well, in that case, uh, let's move right into some celebrations and we've got some very, very exciting ones today. Um, first, uh, I have hip hip parades for Laura, who is here, and for Sarah Stevenson for working to implement train staff to train customers and prepare an effective market rollout for our Palace app. Thereby making new and previously unavailable library content available and helping to develop a new and exciting library initiative created by librarians for librarians. And I thank you for your service. And we have three anniversaries this month. And the first is for Catherine D. Christophero. Um, Catherine has been with us for fifteen years. She has served as branch manager here at the Charlotte Hall Library. Currently, she is at Lexington Park uh working on new services, which is her passion and specialty. Am I right about planning new services, adult services now? Okay, well, Catherine is just all over the place. Um, and has made incredibly valuable contributions to our organization. So Catherine, congratulations and absentia for fifteen years. And we are hoping for fifteen more. Our second is for Kit Kichopper. Um, Kit is at the Leonard Town Library and Kit is here. So, um, Kit, you also have fifteen years of service and congratulations. Thank you so much for all your contributions to the library. Can we hear? Can we hear now?
Yep, Sharon says yes. Okay. Um, if you want to say.
We could hear, but it was on the microphone that was on the table. So if you want to use Michael's microphone, that might work better.
Uh, so my current position at Leonard Town Branch is uh charge of the circulation department um and customer service. And um I, in spite of the other tensions that I've had in the past, this one feels like home, so I will be here for a very long time. Thanks, you, Greg.
Thank you so very much. And the next one for twenty-five. Mary Ann. I can't call her right hand, my my right hand. She is a nurse. Um, and I'm honored to work with you. So I'm getting a little moved. Uh, congratulations for twenty-five years. You've really helped make this organization what it is and we're very proud to work.
Thank you. Um, I did have a few things. Um, so, you know, twenty-five years I've lived here more than I've lived anywhere else. This really has become my community. Um, I am raising my kids here and I um I knew in high school that I wanted in. Sorry, I shouldn't move around. Um. So I knew in high school that I wanted to be a librarian and went immediately to library school and, you know, from there, um, this was actually my second job. I worked in Ohio for a year. Um, but I've put my heart and soul into this library system and um, you know, it's a calling. It's not it's not even a career. It's just something I love wholeheartedly. Um, and I care very deeply about the staff and the customers and the community. Um. And I'm proud to say the people that yeah, sorry, keeps cutting out, that the people that are getting the fifteen years and the twenty years, I've played a part in 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 their careers. So that means a lot to me. Um, but I really love this organization. I do not think I'll be here for fifteen more years. But we'll see. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, moving on, we can start with just a couple of changes slash additions. Oh, um, Kit, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, and could you please take that?
Can I just add as we're transitioning? Um, Mary Ann, you've been such an incredible leader in this library community. And thank you so much for everything you've done and helping move us forward and just doing an outstanding job. And I think the celebrations today show such a vibrant, incredible group of individuals who have chosen to share their gifts and skills here, and we are so fortunate to work with them and our entire community is benefiting from the amazing work that Kit is doing and Mary Ann and everybody. So thank you all so, so much. Here, here.
Um, first, a quick update on our strategic plan RFP process. We received ten applications. And uh, thank you to Sharon uh who is on Zoom and to Belinda for serving on the evaluation committee. We have narrowed that down to two applicants. We have uh conversations scheduled with them on Monday morning and Tuesday morning, and we will make a final decision then and begin the work of the strategic plan. Um, we are identifying staff who will be on the strategic planning committee. I will ask that at least two trustees consider volunteering to serve with that committee. And your charges will be probably mostly meet virtually, but um you will uh be reviewing the process as it goes along, looking at the vision, looking at the mission, looking at the um strategies and seeing the sort of process, working with staff and with the eventually uh the vendor we choose to create that strategic plan. Um, you you may, for example, be asked to interview some community leaders. But you'll have input into that plan. So uh, if you don't have to tell me now, but I think by next month, uh, we'll have to think about who's going to be on that um strategic planning committee from the board. So thank you. And uh, the whole plan is submitted for um approval by the trustees. Uh, so all trustees will ultimately have input into it. But if some of you would be willing to work with us to help with the process, that would be greatly appreciated. It will be a six-month sort of process. Um, not just kind of overnight. Lots of work goes into this. Um, I've got some good news about money for you. Um, the Saint Mary's County Arts Council has approved more funding for the library. So they had given us two thousand five hundred dollars. They've now approved funding for all three of our physical branches and funding for the mobile library as well. So that's going to be up to twelve thousand dollars. It has to be used for arts programming. But um, we're very grateful to the Arts Council for moving forward and working with us. Uh, they have expressed their gratitude for all the arts programming that we do to promote the arts in the county. So we're looking forward to uh having some of that program come forward. Also, some good grant news from the state. You'll recall that um to um help offset the rather large cost of the mobile library that built up over the period it was under construction. And also, and sorry, but I feel it's important to mention um my work with the state on digital content. They've given us additional funds. They just proved an additional eight thousand one hundred, one hundred seven dollars. So the total addition to that initial two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant is twenty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. This additional money does have to be spent on materials, so we are adding materials to the mobile library. Um, so a little bit of extra good news there. Um, so we can go from there uh straight into the FY twenty-four budget review and that is in your document.
Michael, before we press on the uh strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a grant for that or where's that?
Yes, there's a twenty thousand dollar grant for that. And in addition, the friends agreed to put up five thousand dollars for it. And so we, all all the, all the bids came within the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, but we, one of the questions we will ask of our two finalists, um, have you ever had a change order? Have you ever had a process where you did not uh complete in a timely fashion or did not meet the goal you have stated? Um, so we're we will be keeping a careful watch on that. And yes, that is a grant, that is a grant fund by and large.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, if you um want to take a look at that document, just about everything is within um tolerance, but I can review a couple areas with you where um perhaps it is not um the admin and COVID hours, we've seen a slight increase there. Um, we've had staff who unfortunately have, you know, in the most recent round contracted COVID and it's during nights that they stay home. We'll be keeping an eye on that. Um. The OPEB at thirty-seven percent, um, Belinda can explain this better than I can, but basically what happens is we make payments and then we get reimbursed for some of that. Um, and so right now, at the beginning of the month, when this uh was was prepared, we had paid out, but we had not yet received some of the reimbursements back um that happens with that. So um, slightly high there.
Belinda, is anything to add on that?
No, what it is, is we pay the October, we've already paid the October health bill, but uh for the retirees, they get deductions out of their retirement payments. We don't get the October one. Their their deductions paid back to us until the end of October. So there's always a fluctuation where it's OPEB is high and then it dips and then we pay the next bill and it's high again, so it dips. So it's their deductions from the retirement payments that we don't get till the end of the month. What returns? The funds? The retirees get their retirement payments, the state deducts our our health insurance deductions from their payments and sends it to us. The state sends it to us.
So we pay out and we get reimbursed back for part of it.
It happens the same way with our employees. We've already played the October health bill for our employees, but their deductions appear on their two pay periods in October.
Johnny, you're asking which account this is coming into? We're from?
It goes into the ones on health insurance that you're looking at right there.
Account sixty-two hundred.
Right.
Um, if you look on page two, you'll see that the Lexi electric bill is up, but the Lexi gas bill is down. In part, that's seasonal. We have had a warm uh fall. And so you can expect the the electric bill to go up slightly because of the um additional air conditioning, but winter hasn't kicked in yet, so we don't necessarily have a lot of gas expenses yet. Those are over the year, those should balance out. Um, although we have seen increases in the electric bill. Um, Lex, uh, Leon Electric and the uh Leon Water, Sewer and Trash, we simply don't have a lot of those bills yet. Um, those come in more slowly, so those are down, but they too will go back up. The same with the Hall Electric. We do not have the the bill for this previous month yet, so those those should balance out over the time and they're not like we're regaining anything there. Um, if you look slightly farther down under operating supplies, you'll see the office supplies are except for Leonard Town generally up. Often we front load those, get them and then use them for the rest of the year. Over on page three, uh, you'll see that the digital collection contracts are up in part, there will be reimbursed for some of those by Smurla, who has a grant to help pay for the Wi-Fi hotspots. See, um, virtual services contracts a little high, but um those again often get front loaded. We pay at the beginning of the fiscal year for something that's a year contract. The same over on page four, all the way down under technology for IT contract services. Uh, at forty-eight percent, again, we often paying upfront for the year for that kind of thing. So again, it should balance out over the year.
Excuse me, where was that line again?
That is, if you look at under technology on page four, it's at the bottom. The IT contract services, that's that forty-eight percent.
In the in the block above that. Uh, what's the seventy-five percent?
Oh, furniture and equipment. I I assume that Lexington Park has got some furnishings. Often that will be chairs or new tables. Often that will be chairs or new tables, something like that.
Yeah, both, um, a lot of our branches are front loading their furniture expenses because they've been in desperate need. So when we started the new fiscal year, they've been spending out their, their equipment budget, furniture mostly.
All right. Yeah, but they uh, they are limited what they can spend. So um, it's not necessarily going to be increasing, unfortunately for, for us over, over time. Um, if you look on page five, you see 61% of the grants are paid out, but that's because we've already paid the total for a couple of them, or at least one of them. The um, the digital content app has been paid. And again, that's a pass through for the state. That's not just us that we get that particular uh, grant for. Over on, and we're going to be moving um, on page seven. If you look at the top of that page, you'll see FOL donations and stand sort of regular donations. And just want to sort of indicate that what those are is we've assumed a certain amount for the year. And so when we start bringing that in, we will see um, whether we get up to those amounts or not, but right now they're just sort of looking like they're negative balances and they're not really. We're just waiting to see what kind of money are going to come in those areas. Um, moving over on. Really, all the expenses are pretty much within tolerance right now. Uh, we then move over to expenses and things are, things are looking pretty good. I, I'm not concerned about anything with the budget right now, but questions about it.
Have we, have we had no reports uh, as of this document? Um, OPEB, interest and dividends type of there, but anyway.
Um, we, we have statements that um, we, we share out. Um, we haven't entered them into this particular report.
Why wouldn't they go in there if we have space for them?
Sorry, what was the question, John? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. So on page?
Look on page eight.
So we're seeing there's a space to record interest and dividends from Vanguard, OPEB, unrealized gain and losses. So we have the data. I'm wondering why it's not populated.
Because um, we get those Vanguard data quarterly. I got it on Tuesday. This report is for, uh, September 30th. So I didn't get the Vanguard report until after this ran. So it will show up on the next one.
How about the?
Um, again, I don't enter the OPEB into my um, QuickBooks. The accountants do that for me. So as of right now, they do those entries quarterly. So for me, I don't have the data in my, in my QuickBooks to run. So I don't make that assumption that I know what it is until the accountant's put it in. So that will only be updated quarterly. Mm-hmm. Right. So we just finished the first quarter and um, I will be sending the accountants all of the statements that they request at the end of a quarter. And then they'll go through, it'll take them a couple of weeks because we aren't their only clients. But and then, so probably by the end of the month, I would assume I should have it for the next month's statement, but it could be a little bit longer.
And you're, you're welcome to see the statements as well. And asset strategy will be presenting to the board next month uh, on the OPEB.
On that topic, did they not promise us a quick snapshot at the end of the month based on our last conversation with them?
John, could you talk into your microphone?
I'm sorry. Uh, in our last conversation with them, um, we had raised some concerns about the amount of time it took them to get to us all their enhanced data. So that by the time we actually saw it, the dollars and cents were relatively irrelevant. And they made note of that, if I remember correctly, and said, oh, well, we can send you a snapshot prior to us going through all of our procedures to give you that big elaborate report. Or did I remember that wrong?
Um, well, uh, I can certainly ask them for a statement. We, you know, we, we see the um, report every month from um, Schwab. So um, but if you want something specific from them, they, they report quarterly to us and they'll be reporting next quarter.
Um, my recollection was that the, the, the timeframe of a monthly report, it was too short of a time to be useful or actionable. And so we, we decided to stick with the quarterly reports to get a better sense of how things were moving.
That, that I understand the, the, the spot where we have a meeting and when they start to see the data from all of their accounts. I get that, but I thought our objection was that is additionally delayed. By the time they do those umpteen pages of fluff at the front, that most of us can't figure out what they're trying to say anyway. We're looking for the hard numbers and I thought they were going to give us a, a quickie. But if we've got the Schwab statements, I would request that the Schwab statements be a part of our monthly uh, presentations.
We do get monthly statements from Schwab. And actually what you wanted them to put out quicker was their overall um, analysis of this quarterly statements. They do do that slowly. Um, so for example, I think when this occurred, it was the end of December's quarter and we didn't get their analysis until almost February. But we do get the Schwab statements every month uh, on the sixth of the following month.
Well, how about this depending?
So it's their analysis that you wanted quicker.
All right, but depending on how a Schwab statement is constructed, we may be able to kind of see how the flow is going off of that while we await for the more lengthy, more elaborate one.
Uh, we have it. Uh, I can't remember if I always send that one to Tressa. Michael gets it. Um, and it's up to the board and Michael as to whether it appears in the packet because it does have banking information.
Happily put it in the packet for you. Uh, and I've got the most recent one right here if you want to see it.
Yes, please.
We'll hit that to you at break. Okay, but I've, I've got the most recent statement right here. I ran it off, or at least I ran off a page of it. So um, yes, well, they'll be presenting next month and let's talk with them. Um, and with any luck, that will be a report on this past quarter. Uh, and we'll see if that's what they're doing, then I think that we can say that will be fairly timely.
I do want to state that, like I said, we don't get that statement till around the sixth. And um, some of our board meetings are like the eighth, depending on when the second Friday occurs. So sometimes they may not appear in the packet. We'd have to bring them to the meeting because I don't get them until.
Yeah, they.
And I understand all that, but, but the net fallout from all that is that by the time all of us see it and sit down to discuss it, even the trend line is irrelevant because the market can flip on a dime.
Is, is there anything in the chat we need to address? Belinda, is there anything in the chat?
So um.
Okay.
So can we see the next statement and see if it is useful? I believe she's talking about OPEB just, or Schwab, just like you, John.
So that'll be in next month's packet.
Uh, I can send the whole statement to the board.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
That's the one you've got now?
Yeah.
All right, all right. So why don't we wrap up this budget conversation and take a break? Um, Michael, anything to lead us through on the budget piece?
Uh, no, I, other than, you know, there, there's some things that seem like they're high, but um, we're not particularly concerned right now.
Yeah.
There are some things that are low, um, but unfortunately they're not representing uh, windfalls of any kind. Um, over the, over the year, these things should average out as, as they have this past fiscal year to being pretty much right on, on the money. Um.
Thank you. All right, let's entertain a motion for a five minute break.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Tressa. All in favor of a five minute break? Please say aye. Aye, all right. See you in five minutes. All right, everybody. Uh, we are going to resume the meeting from here and we will turn it back over to Michael to continue with the informational report.
Thank you. Quick mobile library updated is in the state. Um, and we anticipate delivery mid-November. Uh, we will put the wrap on and the, and the wrap is, the design has been finalized. Um, and we're hoping to have it ready to go, call it mid-December, but you know, that's holiday time. But um, so we are working with the county to determine the best time to have the ribbon cutting, either immediately before the holidays or shortly after New Year because we do want our delegation to have the opportunity to attend. Up and you can see the uh, wrap itself, very colorful. Um, and really liking all aspects of the design, which is very representative of sort of things we know in the county.
Wow, that's beautiful.
And we're very grateful to Maryland State Library for the additional funding that is going into collections. Um, that funding has to be spent by today, so um, we'll um, be making sure the state knows we've done that. Looking at the facility's master plan, um, it, uh, I had printed this off for our new board members, but apparently at least one that I never saw yet. What is a facility's master plan? That is an updated look at the library's structures. And this particular one was done in April of 2022 by HBM Architects. There was a grant to do this from the state. And you'll see that it's extremely detailed. Um, so I don't necessarily want to go through all aspects of it, other than to say that what they've done is they kind of look at what would be a good standard of a building and then compare our facilities to that and say kind of where are you doing okay? Where might you wish to make some improvements? It's very important that we have an updated plan because when we go to apply for capital funding uh, from that $7.5 million a year that the state has available for libraries to do capital improvements, you have to have a current plan that will justify your ask. And the county does have $3.5 million set aside for us for fiscal year 28. I'm hopeful that we won't have to update this plan, but we will if necessary to make sure that when we go to apply for grant funding from the state that year, that we have a plan that they consider current enough. Um, we got $1.6 million for the Leonardtown Library from that fund. I hope that we can get at least $1 million. I would like to look at page 99. Um, and just take a look at some of the amounts that they estimate this might cost. Um, their recommendation for this building was, their first recommendation was a new building to be located a little bit south of here. And they simply thought that this facility, in order to make it of suitable size and quality for the customers that it serves, it should be a new build and not a renovation for this particular structure. Um, and if you look on page 99, you'll see 15 to 20,000 square feet, which is an increase of about 50 to 100% in its size. Um, we'd be looking at 8 million, almost 9 million to 14 million dollars. And since this uh, report came out of a little bit over a year ago, I can only assume costs will have gone up. So that amount of money, I don't know that we'll find on the table, but um, we can see what we can do. Their next recommendation for Charlotte Hall is a major renovation to expand this current structure. That's going to be difficult to do if you go look around. Um, there's not a lot of room to grow out and into. There's power lines. There's the trail over here. There's the parking lot. But I think we But I think we could probably figure out some way to do a five thousand square foot expansion here. You could try putting a second story on, but that's very inefficient in terms of how you spend your money and you've got to put in elevators, stairs. I don't think that's a good solution for us. Getting more affordable perhaps would be a major renovation of the existing ten thousand square feet. And we've got some plans for that. And if you look in the report, you'll see HBM's recommendations for how to do these things. With the money we'd have on hand was call it three and a half million. Let's say we add another million. We could do a mid-level renovation of the existing ten thousand square feet. What we'd really need to do is figure out a better way to have staff spaces. Right now there's sort of all separate. What are currently some managers offices? We might want to make study rooms, expand out back a little bit. The wall that's there with the second staff area, have all the staff in one area. And then make some adjustments to how the collection is done, but it could really use a full refresh. For Leonard Town, they just had a couple of minor suggestions. And reconfiguring a couple of the spaces for additional sort of efficiency. I don't see us doing much with Leonard Town frankly for the next couple of years. It's a beautiful facility. You know, no facility is perfect. For Lexington Park. They recommend a major renovation is their first. And a possible addition of six hundred fifty square feet where that would come as currently between where the children's area is in the meeting rooms. There's a kind of just a wide open space there that could very easily be glassed in, and that would be an additional six hundred fifty square feet that we could use for what is currently the children's area. They'd be looking at taking out the wall that exists between the children's area and the main part. Lowering the stacks, reconfiguring spaces, and all these specific recommendations are in this report. So second would be a major renovation without the additional square feet. And you see even a minor renovation with finishes, new service points and reconfigurations where we're looking at a fair amount of money. So there is going to be a bill come forward that will ask the state to consider bumping up the library renovation fund. We've reported back on the number of facilities in the state that are not, shall we say, up to a twenty-first century standard. And so we'd be asking for forty million dollars. I don't know if that will pass or not, but if it were, we would certainly be looking at trying to get our fair share of a greater amount. But as I say, this report is primarily important for when we do apply for funds to make sure that this kind of report would justify that request.
Michael, what is the history of the typical lifespan of one of these reports? Before somebody says, I'm sorry, that's yesterday's news.
You're looking at about five years, so we could probably just slide it in for the next time, but then we'd want to look for a grant to have it redone. And I have for the past several years served on the committee that's been giving away the grant fund, so I'm very familiar with that process. The committee does look very carefully at this, but frankly, with any suggestion we were to make about Charlotte Hall, I think that that request would be viewed favorably. Take a look at the Maryland Time to Care Act. We've been kind of hesitant to bring a lot of detail about this to you. Because we don't know a lot of things even still. And if we went in with the state plan, it would mean employees contributing into that state plan. And frankly, we just never wanted to bring it out into the public without knowing what that employee share might be. But something has happened that's kind of put it on fast forward. And so we do want to talk to you about it with the understanding that okay, yeah, with the understanding that we don't yet know all the details. And some information on it's not going to get released till January, but we think we've got a really good handle on what might happen. And a recommended, I mean, it's past recommendation, we've taken some action as operations. So we do have a presentation for you here. This is provided by Bolton, who is also our actuary, but it's for all the libraries in the state of Maryland. And they do have, we do have permission to show this to you, but thank you for Bolton for carefully putting together a package for Maryland libraries. So if I could see slide two. So first of all, what is the Time to Care Act? It provides paid sick leave for all Maryland employees. It also protects a person's job, sort of like FMLA does for up to twelve weeks. And sometimes with some type of parental leave, it could be as many as twenty-four weeks, but then it also provides pay which the FMLA does not. So this was originally legislation from two years ago, Governor, then Governor Hogan vetoed it. His veto was overridden. Some changes were made in the legislative session this in fiscal, and I'm sorry, column of year twenty-three. But let's move forward here. Oh, I'm sorry, back one. Yeah, so one more up. One more slide for, there we go. Thank you. There we go. Yes, thank you. So when does it take effect? The regulations on it are going to be published January first twenty twenty-four, so we'll know all the details officially for the state plan then. There's still a lot of things we don't know right now. But here's how it's going to work. The state plan is going to get funded by contributions from employees and employers. There is no opt-out of participating in this plan. We'll talk about later how you have three possible ways you can participate, but you cannot say we're not doing it. If you've got one employee, you have to make sure that this plan is in effect in the state of Maryland. So that would not include all volunteer operations such as our friends in our foundation. They don't have any paid employees. Now, certain small employers may not have to pay into the state plan, even if their employees do. So think of it as like social security. You don't get out of it. The paid benefits from the state plan would begin on January first of twenty twenty-six. So there's a time period when people will start paying into it, and that would be October first of twenty twenty-four, so basically a year from now. Under the state plan, employers and employees start paying into this. And then a year and a quarter later, employees will be able to start claiming the benefits.
So first you gotta build up a war chest.
Gotta build up a war chest if you're in the state plan. Hint, hint, we don't want to be. If we do nothing about this, we'll automatically get entered into the state plan. So our next slide. So who gets covered? Employers. If you have, as I say, even one employee, you're basically going to be in this plan. But if you have, if you're a small employer with fewer than fifteen employees, it looks like the employer may not have to pay in, but the employees still might have to if they're in the state plan. So they're trying to exempt small, really small businesses. That would not be us. Employees, any employee who's worked at least six hundred eighty hours over the previous year. And even if that employment is spread out among multiple employers. So let's say we have somebody who worked for us, we don't, we don't have that few hours for four hundred fifty hours and that employee worked an additional two hundred and thirty somewhere else, that employee would still get the benefits.
So it's carried forward from employer to employer.
Yeah, yeah. That's about a thirteen-hour week.
We do have pages and subs who have more than one employment. So we don't know how that will work.
It's a thirteen-hour week, so some of our pages are twelve hours, so that's twelve, twelve hours, but if they're working somewhere else, they're still going to get covered. Next slide. So what is provided? What is it provided for? Basically, think of it as triggered by the same things as the Family Medical Leave Act. So it's very generous though in who it covers. So basically, it's care for a newborn or a child newly placed for adoption, foster care or kinship care. A family member with a serious health condition, obviously it applies to you yourself as an employee. Care for next of kin in military service who have a serious health condition resulting from military service. Attend to qualifying military exigencies. And as it says, up to twenty-four weeks if they take parental leave and additional time to attend to a serious health condition.
I'm sorry, what does number five even mean?
I'm going to assume that let's say you as a military employee were transferred overseas very quickly to do something. And this, you, you could then say this is leave that is covered. It could be that if you're National Guard and you get called up. So basically.
It's actually, it's actually, they expanded what military families can have covered, and that includes and that's FMLA did this too. That includes really a lot of different things, including like when a military member comes back from a deployment, you can take time off of work. You can take time to care for issues in your family if your employee, your military member is deployed at the time. So it it covers some different extended she's within the military community for deployed military spouses.
We're, we're charred over to the military DOD program.
Military DOD does not protect any family member's job when their employee, when their spouse is overseas. This protects the job.
All right, so that twelve weeks however is not all have to be taken in a row. This can be spread out over a year, just like FMLA can. So during those twelve weeks, the employee is entitled to the time and to a certain amount of pay. They do not, we cannot require employees to use their vacation sick or other leave upfront. Say, all right, well, you've got, you know, twenty hours of sick leave, use that first. Nope, that's off the table. This is going to apply no matter what. They may use such leave, but if they do, they can't get compensated more than a hundred percent of what their salary would be. So let's say they're going to get a certain percentage of pay and we'll be reviewing that in a second from this plan. They could say, okay, in addition to that, I'm going to use these vacation hours and I'm due my full one hundred percent of pay for that pay period. But we can't make them use their, their accrued leave of any kind. And this time can run concurrently if someone's also got an FMLA exemption. Then they can do that, but this sort of compensation happens kind of before FMLA, this plan would take precedence. Next slide, let's see who, what would they call a family member? This is really defined very broadly, even more broadly than the FMLA. It includes grandparents, grandchildren, siblings. Basically, you know, biological adopted foster step-grandparent, biological adopted foster step-grandchild, biological adopted foster step-sibling. Quite a bit is covered by this plan.
So the difference between this and FMLA is that FMLA you can take for medical issues for a spouse. Spouse, a parent or child, that's it. This includes siblings, grandchildren, spouse, parent, child, domestic partners. And so it expands who you can take the leave to help.
So it's, it's a very generous and well-intentioned plan. It will create some complications for employers. Next slide. So how much benefits are going to get paid? So it's triggered at sixty-five percent of the Maryland average weekly wage. Currently, the Maryland average weekly wage is one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars a week. Or seventy thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars a year. At sixty-five percent of that, it's at forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So employees who make that or below will get ninety percent of their wages on a weekly basis. Above that, the employee will get fifty percent of their wages. So many of our employees are tier one and they get ninety percent of their weekly wage. Higher paid employees would get fifty percent. So we've got, if you include our substitutes, eighty-five employees who are not eligible unless they're working somewhere else. Our pages probably not eligible unless they're working someone else. Thirty-two of our employees will be getting ninety percent. And thirty of our employees would be getting fifty percent paid out here. So you will get at least fifty dollars per week, but not more than a thousand dollars per week. So what is the cost to employers? The total contribution going back to the state can be no more than one point two percent of our wages. We have to contribute at least fifty percent under the state plan.
Half that one point two.
Yeah, so we would be looking at point six percent. At our current wages, that'd be about twenty thousand six hundred forty-four dollars a year that we'd be paying into this plan if we're in the state.
What's that number again?
Twenty thousand six hundred forty-four dollars. And on our frontline staff, the amount per year we're anticipating if it's fifty percent would be about a hundred fifty to three hundred dollars in contributions a year.
That is what the employee will also have to pay.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of our, our frontline staff, those who are like, you know, making below that, that average amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. If you're above that, you'd be looking at three hundred twenty-five to seven hundred and fifty dollars a year in contributions by the employee. And this is kind of why we haven't really wanted to say a lot about it. I don't know how popular this is going to be among our employees, but we have a better option, we think. So just hang on to it. But in some cases, we might be required to contribute more for some employees. So we could be looking at thirty-four thousand four hundred and seven dollars a year that the library would owe into the plan.
I've got a couple minutes. I'm a little lost between who must and who can. Are we in the must category?
We have to participate in some aspect of the plan and we've got three options. We're going to explore those in a second. We have to participate for our employees.
But do the employees have to participate?
Yes. There is no opt-out. It's mandatory. Think of it like social security. There is no opt-out. Now, and one of the options that we hope to pursue, the employees may not have to pay. We don't know that yet, but we're hoping that.
In but not pay.
They, they would be eligible. They may not have to pay and we need to, we'll, we'll know more detail about that eventually. It's possible, but we don't know that, but it could be they're going to have to pay as well. So we've been in a discussion with other Maryland libraries and taking some action to help us manage this plan, but let's sort of discuss those plans in the next couple of slides, slide nine. Oh, I was, this is just a, yeah, but this, let's go ahead and skip that, yeah. One more back. Yeah, so what if we do not participate? If we're not complying with the plan under some option, could that mean? Basically, we could have an employee take us to court. We would be fined by the state. The employees can take civil action to recover three times the value of lost wages and reasonable attorney fees. And we may be assessed up to $1,000 for each employee for whom the employer is not in compliance. So the state has got some stick as well as possible carrots here and there. So to be compliant, we'll have to provide the employee with all information about FMLA and Time to Care Act and their options under it. We'll have to determine their eligibility. We assume that working with the state will determine how much each employee is being paid in benefits and be able to provide the employee with options such as their leave available to reach 100% of their salary. Does an employee have to file a Time to Clear Act claim if they want to take time off? Let's say they want FMLA, do they also have to do the Time to Care Act? No, they don't have to. However, we have to make sure as an employer that they know that they could and what their benefits would be if they did. And if we weren't, we would not be in compliance and we could be fined by the state. So we just have to make sure the employees know that they are due. So let's go ahead to the next slide. Here are three options. We can default into the state plan, and if we do nothing, we're going to get into the state plan. We can self-administer. So we basically take care of all aspects of this. And Bolton says that that is not something that they recommend for any employer of any size to do because it's likely to become more expensive for you.
We had another strategy of overhead would be huge.
Yeah, but the time spent, yeah. And especially for an organization like ours, which has an HR department of one and a half, basically, probably not recommended with Linda being the one and me kind of being the half. You can hire an insurance carrier to administer the program for us, and that basically is what we're going to do. So next slide. What are some of the challenges? Yeah, we've got to figure out who's eligible. We have to look at what their leave determination would be, their return to work, the cost of business, concerns about data privacy, what are the premium payments and payroll management? We'd have to manage all that. And coordination with Maryland Department of Labor on this. I mean, we've got to notify them, we're going to opt out if we're not doing anything. So this does present for employers quite a few challenges in administering this program. So let's go ahead to the next slide. You know, we'd have to juggle between FMLA and Time to Care Act with those extended times. Not all Time to Clear Acts would be FMLA claims and vice versa. So payroll management gets fairly complex, and we might be subject to audits from Maryland Department of Labor to ensure compliance. So here's what we're going with. This is the the Time to Care Act collaborative. What has happened, and you can, never mind, keep it right there. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MABE, MAKO, that's the Maryland Association of Counties, the Maryland Municipal League have all gotten together and said, wow, this is going to be a problem. So what we're doing, and they've included libraries in this, is we're going to pool our resources and find a vendor to administer this plan for us. We think that someone's going to a large insurance company, for example, is going to say, here's an opportunity we'll make a little bit. But we think that we'll have to pay something, but we're going to save money over the state plan, and basically this can be impossible for us to administer ourselves. Under this plan, it is possible, but we don't yet know that the employees might not have to contribute. We're going to put in money as an employer, and with all these agencies, including St. Mary's County, they're going with this too. And I believe St. Mary's County Schools are as well. That there might be enough money there to fund out the benefits without employee contributions, but we don't know that yet. But there would be an agent to administer the plan and offer compliant resources to us. So next slide, please. What would we get under this ongoing support for collaborative members? There'd be somebody that'd help us administer it and to, you know, the employees would make a claim there. They would get back to us, so here's the claims, you know, approved. Here's what they're going to get. Here's what you might owe. Here's, you know, do they need to take leave? We do think that it's going to reduce costs and help us ensure compliance. So next slide, I think we're done here. So we were asked to, if we were going to participate, to let them know by October 1st of this year. So we said yes. Under, I considered that a, you know, a personnel administrative thing and figured that we could do that. We've signed a memorandum of agreement, and we paid an initial amount of $3,000 to be in this plan. So what's going to happen is the collaborative is going to release an RFP, and we'll see who responds. Neither the library or our employees would have to make contributions till January 1st of 2026. So we don't have to start paying in already next October. So we can't answer all your questions about this right now, but we're thinking that every library system in the state is going to join. They were all in on the kind of conversation we've had with Bolton. We're thinking that some may join through their counties because unlike, in some cases, they are county engineers and county employees unlike us. St. Mary's County is going to be going in with this. We imagine that there'll be enough money coming forward here that we'll be able to hire a good agent. But if you look at the agreement that we signed, it's in your packet under the memorandum of agreement. You'll see a better idea of exactly what they would be doing for us. Our membership fee on an annual basis would be $3,000, not the possibly as much as 20 or even twice that. That that would give us all the coverage that we need. And that would be an ongoing thing. If we ever decided we wanted to get out, we could and join the state plan. If it would cost us, and this is under failure to purchase and maintain TCA insurance, if it would cost us more to be in this plan than to be in the state plan, we wouldn't have to pay more than what we would pay into the state plan.
So even if we were in it, if the pricing turned out to be worse, it's capped. That's what competition.
Exactly, yeah. So it seemed like a pretty good deal to us, and we, we think this is going to be the way to go. We're confident that this is the best possible response. We're still not talking to staff about it a lot, although a number of them listen in, so they're going to know. And as soon as one knows, they all know. But we'll just have to tell them, we don't know yet all the details, but we had to be in by October 1st, and that's why we said, okay, we better get going on this. Yes.
And I want to go back to part four, membership fees. And I want to be sure I did not miss here what you said about fewer than $200 and $3,000.
Mm-hmm, that would be the fee we pay into this collective collaborative each year.
Just to get in.
To be a part of it.
Yeah.
Are there, are there additional contributions beyond that?
Yes, we might end up having to have more, depending on what that is. But we don't think it's going to be anything like what we would be paying, and we don't yet know because we won't know until all the plans are finalized. But it will never be more than what we owe to the state, and we think it's going to be substantially less.
So this is the equivalent of country club membership, but not green fees?
Yes, yeah, this is, yeah.
So we start paying the membership fee this year?
We already have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're just including that in the budget, finding room for it somewhere?
Yeah. We owed by October 1st, so we got an in-house from them and.
Well, this sounds very reasonable.
Well, is there any, is there any indication about the stability of that cost?
All right, let me make sure I understand your question.
Well, think about it as a homeowner's association fee. It's $300 per year, and the next thing you know, it's $700 a year.
Well, you'll see that they've got a schedule of what it will be, and that amount's not going to change until December 31st of 2026. And if it starts to get unreasonable and we pay more, then we say, fine, we're out, we'll do the state.
But it does say, actual operating experience may call for increases or decreases in membership fees as determined by the administrative committee.
Yes.
So we'll see. Time will tell.
Yeah, so, but we're probably looking at this amount for at least two and a half years, but we'll have to see kind of where we are.
There's also an ability to pull out of this if we ever feel we need to. It's written in that memorandum.
Yeah, yeah, and it's all kind of spelled out here. If we look at this and say, we just don't like this, we can opt into the state plan.
So let's do a hypothetical. We're in it, and everything's going along fine. And an employee says, my wife's got a major medical issue. I'm going to have to take care of her for a while. What's the process, the paperwork? Is that going to be on us? Or is it like an insurance claim with your car? You file with them and they take care of it?
And that's why we want to be in the collective and not self-administer. We don't know, we don't yet know how it would be with the state. That hasn't been, that detail hasn't been released. But we assume that if we're in this plan, that it would be like an insurance company, the employee, say the employee, all right, here's the process. You apply, they will determine eligibility, they will determine the amount, they will say, okay, here's what we're paying out, and we don't know how they're going to pay or how quickly they're going to pay. But then we would know what the employee was due, and the employee then could say, all right, I'm good with that, or I've got all this leave, I'm going to use that too to get, and you would owe, you know, me, but we'd be paying out that fund anyway to the employee on their.
But what I want to be clear on, all that claims administrative burden does not start or go through us.
If we, if we're in this plan, that is our belief. Is that we're having someone administer it for us. And we don't know about the state plan, if they would start with us or if they would go to the state directly. As I say, that a lot of these details, we just don't know yet. This just looks like the very best thing that we can do.
Do you think this, the RFP responders? Do you anticipate it being like Hartford or more like United Healthcare?
I wish I knew the answer to your question. I'm sorry. We can have the gentleman from Bolton present directly to you if you like, and he might be able to have a better answer to that, but I don't think we know yet who would respond to the RFP. I think that it could be either of the above. I think it would be somebody.
I just blocked them out.
Yeah, they've not floated any names, and I suspect won't as part of the RFP process.
Well, it's going to be somebody that sees a huge pot of gold in doing this.
It's going to be somebody with a lot of capacity, that's for sure.
And that's the other thing, yeah.
Maryland is not the first state to do this, but we don't yet know, you know, how, everything about what's going to happen here. But again, it's a well-intentioned plan, and there are a lot of people in Maryland who do not have any kind of pay for sick leave. That was the intention of this. So we're just going to do everything we can to support it the best we can within our capacities and organizations.
Are these other states far enough ahead that we can learn anything from their experience?
I don't think that they are. I don't think we've got a, you know, I don't think we even got two years head start, they may have two years head start yet.
Michael, I'm looking at the agenda and our time. We have a lot to cover.
I'm hoping some of these will be quick.
Okay.
But we don't like to keep you afternoon. We do have, and we can put off the closed session. I mean, I can catch you up on that later.
Well, let's, we'll do our best and get to.
Um, we do have some action items. The first is our holiday dates, and look in your packet because I edited a couple of those to add in addition, and that would be the Christmas holiday on the 23rd of 2024. I added a Monday. The reason why is we pretty much be closed on the Sunday and have people come back in one day and then have two days off when we thought we'd have nobody in the library. So those are the holidays we're asking you to approve for next year. They're all pretty standard, except for that Christmas, additional Christmas holiday. And the first and the second of this year, 2024, have already been approved by you last year. So what you're looking at is starting with Martin Luther King Day and then through New Year's Day of 2025. And I just would like you to approve those as days.
Can you hear me now, Michael?
Yes, Judith, welcome. Hooray.
I think the date on Thanksgiving Eve is a typo. It says November 22nd. Should it be the 27th?
Good question. I need to look it up really fast.
And my second question is.
What's correct?
All of, are all of these paid holidays? In other words, if the employee was normally scheduled for that day, would they be paid?
No, if you see when it says the library is open, and there are one, two, three of those, those are so-called floating holidays. So staff basically get holiday hours for them, but we're in the library that day. So I won't say it's a paid holiday per se. Not like the others where, yes, we're closed and the staff get paid for those days.
All right, I think, can we entertain a motion to approve this slate of holidays?
If we correct the Thanksgiving Eve date?
Yes, with the correction of the Thanksgiving Eve date to November 27th. Good catch, Judith. Anybody want to move?
I'll make the motion and we approve the dates.
Thank you, Tessa. Can we get a second?
I will second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
The next is the policy for our art galleries. And we need to change that because Leonard Town now has one. So we'll title it Library Art Galleries and not Lexington Park Library Art Gallery, but the policy itself is what we're looking at for now. And we've also added some information there about possible purchases of the artwork. So I don't think there's anything particularly problematic about this one, but please take a look at it, and I ask for your approval of it.
I have one question, Michael.
Yes.
The old version, you kind of defined artists as amateur student professionals, children. And you're taking that out. So do you feel the need to define what a local artist is? Could it be a child or a whatever, student or amateur professional?
Well, please take a look at the last sentence. Artists interested in displaying their works should contact the Executive Director of St. Mary's County Arts Council. So we've got this deadened as somebody who is an artist, but yes, it could be anybody who wants to submit their work, and the Arts Council takes a look at that.
Okay, so the Art Council will decide whether or not it's appropriate to go in the library.
Well, we have oversight of it too, but they start there. So I assume if they're, they're going to say, well, you're not an artist, that we'd already have that in place. But we are able to vet the works ourselves.
Okay, okay.
I have a grammar question. The third line, can we take out featuring? Doesn't seem to make sense there now.
Yes, I'm sorry, on mine, I scratched out the word featuring. That should not be there. All right.
All right, I think we can entertain a motion to approve this policy with the deletion of the word featuring in the third line. Anybody wish to make that motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Judith.
Second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? No, motion carries.
The next one is on library card policies, and if you look on the second page of that, you'll see we've scratched out a couple of sections. And instead inserted just a couple of lines into the text at large about kids card with a checkout limit of five item smart cards go there, and that pretty much takes care of the things that between all the policies we had said under the library cards through schools, childcare providers section. And instead of having the information about unsheltered residents, which we don't necessarily know, we have those without proof of current address added in to the policy. So we would like just to get approval for taking out those sections and covering in a more clear fashion, um, what the policies would be.
Was there previously a limit on how many items a kid's card or a smart card could check out?
It kind of dates to before um children were fine free. And we didn't want a lot of items going out and and sort of exempt from, you know, paying for resources, so those children still have to pay for lost items. Kind of dates from before that, but it the idea is that it's really pretty, a pretty limited card. And in the schools, it's mostly used digitally in any way. It gives them access in class to our electronic resources.
Thank you.
Is there a conflict under kids cards? Youngest under the age of 18? And then down below for adults 16 years old and over?
No, in Maryland, a 16-year-old can get his or her own library card.
So at 16, you can choose, I think, is the
Yeah.
idea there.
I'm sorry.
Um, so the kids cards go up to 18 because of the school cards too. So like you could still be in St. Mary's County public schools and be 18. And so there is an overlap. You could technically have an adult card and like a student card at the same time. Um, but it would be for that two-year period. Um, we don't see a lot of 16-year-olds coming in for a full card, um, but they could technically do that.
Also, it allows a 16-year-old doesn't have to have a parent with them. Anyone under 16 does have to have that parent with them to get their card, so that is that overlap.
So I think we can uh move to accept these changes to the library cards policies. If anyone wishes to make that motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Judith.
Second.
Just thank you, Sharon. Team Zoom coming through. I love it. Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion is approved.
So we have pretty much completely rewritten the service animals policy. Um, and you see that the previous one that had quite a bit of information in it that um maybe was a little paternalistic. Yes, go ahead.
This was really just rewritten to match Maryland law.
Yeah, um, so in any case, uh, we we think that it's a more direct policy. It says pretty much all the same things. But I mean, do we really need to say many people with disabilities use a service animal in order to participate fully in life? I it's just there were a lot of stuff there that that we didn't need, so.
But in the uh major paragraph two up from the bottom of the page, if a service animal is excluded for legitimate reasons, the goods or services must still be offered to the person without the animal present. And that's going, so we kick your python out, you have to go too?
Um, it defines uh incidentally um service animals as dogs and miniature horses, so pythons would not come under this anyway.
How about your miniature horse then?
Um, basically, the the person could come back for services without an animal that's under control, yes. Uh, I doubt that would be something that person would want to do, but.
This certainly can't.
You know, the mobile library may address this issue. If we say you can't come into a branch with your service animal, but we have a mobile library around the county, that might be something they could access library services to, besides the all the online services we have. I mean, we're saying we don't want to deny them service.
I I I don't think that this says anywhere that it does deny them service. It says the handler may be asked to remove their service animal from the library. It doesn't say they can't come back.
No.
This this is Maryland law, like we just took the Maryland law and put it into our thing because Maryland, they define the service animals for us.
No, I'm I'm agreeing. I'm just saying that if anybody should complain, they're not able to get library services because her animal doesn't know how to behave appropriately. We have a lot of alternatives for them. So I, no, I agree with the policy.
Yeah. But you're taking out that they must still be offered services without the animal's present.
Well, I it's implied, the handler may be asked to remove their service animal from the library. It doesn't say that they can't come back or they can't have service. It just says you have to take the animal out.
Yeah. And I think there's a lot of ways for them to get library services. So I have a different question, though. What if the library patron who's already there has like severe dog allergies? I know somebody in my family does, and a handler comes in with a dog. I don't.
Um, under, under.
How do you choose?
Under the ADA, we have.
Let's let Judith finish her thought here.
So I mean, if if somebody brings a dog in and it starts affecting somebody's health, you know, with an asthma attack or allergies, how do we choose which patron service comes first?
I think this is a danger. Um, under the ADA, um, the person who has a qualified service animal um that is there to perform tasks for a person who has a disability and is trained to do those tasks to support that person uh takes precedence um over anyone who may like have an allergy, because allergies are not covered under the ADA. In practice, uh, we would do our our best to accommodate both um both customers, but the the person who has the ADA right of access um would sort would take precedence there. Their access is um is guaranteed. It's protected.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. We we have to respect this. It would be against the law for us not to.
So can we entertain a motion to approve the revised service animals policy?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Tressa. Ready one a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or discussion?
I would just like to say, uh, this is Belinda, Sarah logged in and said that basically all the crossed out things are more of a procedures rather than a policy, which so we've moved them to our procedure manual. So we still have this information, but it's not the official policy. And a policy is what goes out to our our public. Procedures is how our staff deal with it.
I did have one question before we approve this. I noticed that you had in here that um the service animal has to be under control or would need to leave. And you have the service animals behavior fundamentally alters the nature of a library program or service. Is that enough information, do we think? I have been in situations with people who said they had a service animal that would bark or um well, specifically barking. And that I'm wondering if that would be enough if if our if our library staff feel that the fundamentally altering the nature of a library program is enough guidance or enough overhead protection for them to ask someone to leave if the service animal is barking?
Someone's going to have to make a judgment call on something like that. I mean, if a if an animal were to bark once, um, and I think that although I've never known that to happen, it would perhaps be something we'd say, okay, fine, but if it's constant barking, we'd say that animal's not under your control, so. I I think this is enough guidance. Since in some cases, you know, you can't spell out everything, you just have to have enough of a policy in place that we can make good calls.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that our our library staff were comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's a good question, Sharon. Yeah, I would add too that that fundamental alteration is pretty typical language for other kinds of accommodations under the ADA, so it's a pretty widely used term of art.
All of our staff have been trained in the ADA um service dog at regulations. Uh, as you all know, we have AM and she has a service dog, so she has gone to all the branches and given that training.
Thanks for bringing it.
So far, no one has brought in a service mini horse. Um, of course, I said that it's going to happen. Um, so yes, those are the two approved animals and and other animals. You can't have a service alligator. Um, uh, did we take a vote on that?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve the service animals policy as revised here, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion is approved.
Okay, the next one is the gift policy, which is largely standing as is, but we've got some additions to it. Um, um, one that we do not provide valuation of gifts. If somebody brings, you know, um something in that they want to give to us, we're not going to say, oh, that's worth, um, I want to make sure that we have the right to deaccession all gifts because some people would say it's got to be a permanent thing, and we have to have the right to say, no, that's not the case. We have the right to decession everything. Um, we're adding special collections, and I'll get to that in a second, what that is. Um, we're adding that gifts may be given to the St. Mary's County Library Foundation. I'm sorry, endowments may be given or one-time cash donations may be given to the foundation and pointing people that way. Um, where it says, no, we don't put FOL donations in the FOL fund. Strike that, that's not part of this policy. That was my note to um the policies and procedures team.
Where are you seeing?
It's in the blue text. It's in blue under the one, two, three, fourth paragraph. That's not part of this, the strike that. It had said the donations may begin to the friends of the library, and and the answer to that is no, we don't do that. Um, the friends do take donations directly, but if anything coming to the library is not going to go to the FOL. A special collection. So we've actually received some of these. Um, if you go to the Maryland Room in Leonard Town, you'll find the genealogical and historical collection. So typically, we don't want books or media. But let's say somebody comes to the library with a collection of every book ever written on historic sodderly. And we say that's valuable to us. We want to have that as a special collection. This is an exception basically for taking books when we really, really, really want them, like when the Historical Society gave us a lot of stuff. So while generally we don't want books, we want those to go to the friends. In this case, we do um we do wish to be able to accept it's really kind of specialized historic or other valuable collections that would help us maintain a history of the county. The other thing is just um the ranch manager may, if they um a particular type of three-dimensional object, say, yes, we'll take that. But typically, what would happen is that is that's going to go to me and then probably likely to the board as well. Um, but those are those are the additions basically that we want to make to this policy.
Can you share some examples of these three-dimensional objects?
And artwork, um, sculpture, for example, uh, would be a three-dimensional uh object, um, perhaps, um.
Got it. Any comments or questions before we make a motion?
I have one editorial suggestion on item three, special collections. I think just for clarity, I would take the last sentence, all special collections, and move it up to be the second sentence. I think it follows that thought of what you're doing, what you'll accept um with special collections.
So you want that to come after a period or local geographic location?
Yeah, I think that follows. You're talking about what you'll accept and then, you know, how you'll accept it. Not a make or break, but I think it follows.
No, no, that that I I'm, that's that's fine.
I agree. I would follow that with other materials donations should be made too.
Other material donations, yeah.
The friends of the library.
Thank you both. Uh, so I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve these revisions of the gift policy with the amendment um in item number three, with that last sentence becoming the second sentence and adding the word other in front of materials donations. Would anyone like to so move?
I will move.
Thank you, Sharon. Second?
I will second.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, thank you, John. All right, motion is approved.
Uh, that's what I've got for you today. Um, other than do you have any new trust to business? And we did have um a closed session planned, but uh it's not particularly um necessary we do that today.
Uh, any new business folks want to bring up or discuss?
I would like to just enter a thought on the flow session. I realize we're cramped for time. But I think it's important that we all understand the longer we delay in taking any kind of action or implementing any kind of recommendations, we are vulnerable because we haven't gotten off the dime.
Well, I I do think we can move into a closed session in a just a couple of minutes here.
Oh, okay. But we were about to get out based on the time.
Um, one piece that I want to add, just looking ahead to our November and December meetings, we have to complete Michael's performance review as we reach the end of the calendar year. We're also going to have to do elections for new officers for the next calendar year, as I recall, so um trustees, please think a little bit about that as we move into November, and I guess the elections will be in December. So just going to put that on people's radar.
Yes.
You also need to decide on your dates for next year.
We we already have that planned for next month. Um, and because you've moved to Fridays away from Mondays, there's fewer disruptions by holidays. Okay, so uh we have, we have those ready for you for next month, and I have begun submitting um performance, I call them review documents to you. Um, so I will continue that and have the various um goals that uh we agreed on addressed by your next board meeting.
Great. Um, so with that, uh, I think we can entertain a motion to move into a closed session to discuss security.
So moved.
We get a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Uh, all in favor of moving into that closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, we'll move into a closed session. Thank you, everybody.